Would you let me know, please, if Kevin comes in?
Yes, I will.
Thank you. Kevin is working today. Meeting on the call, trying to try to make it. All is reading for order. I have an adjustment to the agenda. Better have a point of acting superintendent. Who, A, could I have a motion, please?
To see if the board will appoint Beth Peavy as acting superintendent in school board meeting on Tuesday, May seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two, in the absence of Dr. Josh Sherrill.
Second.
Have a motion and a second? Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Thank you. Public comment. The school board endorses the concept that community participation in the affairs of the school is essential to improve the quality of education for students. To be eligible to address the board, an individual should reside within the school unit, be an employee of the school unit, or be invited by the school board or superintendent to speak. The board shall give due attention to comments and contributions from the audience, but shall not be expected to respond or take action immediately. Audience inquiries other than simple questions shall be referred to the superintendent, who shall investigate or consider the matter and report to the citizen and to the board. If board action is indicated, the item may be included in the agenda for such good meeting. Comments will be heard for no longer than three minutes per person. Is there any public comment? Terry?
I was so careful to get sound that I muted it. This is Terry given, and I have a short window. I'm glad that I have the opportunity to make some comments publicly. I, I'm not sure if the board is aware of how the goings-on in the community in the last month or so have affected all of the educators in the school system. It's a, it's been a rather rough month. And our integrity has been questioned by the community, our local government. Never been questioned before. There's some unrest around some things that educators are trained, educated. We go to school hoping to learn the best methods to educate children of various ages. We go through a rigorous testing process so that we can be qualified to teach. There are a number of educators who have completed the National Board certification, which is another level, continuing ed courses. Any, so many people that work for you, the board, and this community are constantly reading and talking and collaborating and looking for the latest pieces of information that can help students and parents engage their students more fully in the education that we offer. I, I, this is, I, I am retiring. I've been teaching for a long time, thirty-five and a half years, and I've seen a lot of changes, and some of them have not been good. When we find that there's something wrong within our schools, we, as the educators, are always looking for a fix, a diagnosis and a prescription to fix it. And when we have the public saying to us that, well, we've got, we know what's wrong, and we know what the prescription is, and we know how to fix it, it really is, it, it sort of defeats us. We do a really good job in both of our schools, here in this building at Sterns and at Granite Street. Our kids are fed, they're loved, they're cared for, they are comforted, they're educated. We support them. And, and at the same time, there's an awful lot of details that go into anything that we do that we, we don't, we don't necessarily publicize. And I was talking with Ms. Peavy today about the devil being in the details. It's just, this is a very busy time of year for high school students, particularly the seniors who are graduating. And I don't know as though anybody really understands how much coordination and collaboration and just support from one another that it takes to get those events off the ground. National Teachers Week and Teacher Day came and went with a great deal of outpouring of support and love from students, from some parents of some students, the Kataden Federal Credit Union, our administrators, there was something every other day to show support for who we are and what it is that we do. And I, I just appeal to you as the board, the, the elected officials charged with taking care of the schools and the people within it, that you just be supportive of us and ask us questions, talk to us face to face, ask us how things are going and so forth. We'll tell you. And I, I, I just feel as though we need to be, we need to be supported more in different ways and to make sure that all of the information is had and it's out there before someone in the community decides that they know everything. It's very difficult for us, and it weighs heavily on your, your employees, the educators. I've not spoken to anybody else, I'm not one to rally the troops. This comes from me, but I know in casual conversation at lunch and other times that some days it's just, it's like, well, I wonder what's going to happen today that is going to indicate that either we're not doing our job well, or we're not doing enough, or there's a great deal of underappreciation felt on occasion by your, your employees, by the educators in the system. And this is difficult. This is a difficult time. We have weathered, we have weathered over two years of different schooling. It heavily affected and impacted parents and children who found themselves at home and teachers that found themselves at home, teaching through a computer screen, not ideal, not, not anything that anybody of, any one of us would have ever wanted to see happen. And we did that for over two years, and we did a really good job. We did the best that we could do. Did we make some mistakes? Did we miss something? Did perhaps we not engage fully with our students? Absolutely, we're human, but we did a really good job. And I think that needs to be recognized. We're coming out of a period of time where nothing looked like what it usually looked like. And we're coming into a time, we had a prom. Granted, the after-party prom was held at the school. Kids had a great time, except it was a little too warm. We're getting ready to have graduation exercises and so forth that are very similar to what we looked like and had pre-COVID. And that's very refreshing, not only for the students, but I'm hoping it is for their parents as well as the educators in the system. And, and I, I, I don't normally say the things, I don't normally say that I'm speaking for all, but I think if you were to ask individually the folks that work for you as teachers and custodians and food service and ed techs and coaches and everybody else, that you would find that often days we just feel really defeated because it's like we can't do it right. And yet, we've been trained, we have a piece of paper, just like the diploma we're going to give the seniors, that says we completed X number of years of schooling in this particular field, and we've been judged as qualified. So I, I, I thank you for all that you do. It's not an easy task, but I ask if in some manner you might be able to find a way to dig a little bit deeper and support your employees, your educators in a more openly and supportive way, particularly as members of the community come after us. It's very disheartening, yet I'm retiring knowing that I have done the best that I could possibly do, and I've given as much of myself as I can for thirty-five years plus to the students in this school system in Millinocket. And for that, I'm really, I'm really pleased. So thanks for listening, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Terry. Stephanie, are you still on? Any other public comment? Seeing none. Prove all the minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes of the school board meeting, May third, two thousand twenty-two, bearing any errors or omissions.
I wanted to add something that was omitted.
Omitted?
Omitted. On, it was item eighteen, Roman numeral XV-one-one-one, the budget workshop. I was just asking if there were any more choices to represent the needs of all three schools and the kids within. That was not reflected in the minutes. So it's like it added in. Thank you.
I didn't know where you were going. Okay.
What's that?
I, I just didn't know where you were going.
Oh, it's just something that was said, and it wasn't recorded in the minutes, so I just wanted it added in.
Okay, not, not everything that we say goes into the minutes. We just generalize the minutes, especially now where everything is on YouTube.
But the minutes are a reference, so people look back to those minutes to find what was said.
They can do that on YouTube.
But that just happened. So before that, what was, the minute should have been accurate.
Well, all the meetings are recorded.
But not accessible unless you were to ask about that.
Can commit and see those records.
So what we're saying here is that minutes don't have to reflect what's being said.
No, I think what we're saying, Erica, is that not every word that we speak at a board meeting has to be written down and recorded.
I would like this to be added because the budget workshops so far have consisted of very limited choices, and I was asking if we could have a little more discussion on more options for the budget carryover money. That's, that's what I was just asking for.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a motion, do I get a second?
No, I would like to kind of follow up on that a little bit. The international program presentation, we talked for almost a half hour on it, and it's one blur. I, I feel like we should be putting at least a little bit more content into it than that. I mean, a half-hour conversation that summarized in three sentences.
Okay, we'll make sure Josh knows, Josh is our board secretary. With those two changes, am I going to get a second on the minutes or not?
I will second with those two additional pieces.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? For all. Motion on the favorable one, please.
Motion to move to direct the superintendent of schools to authorize payment by the town treasurer to each party listed here, and the sum set against each name contained in the school payroll warrant, number twenty-two dash twenty-four, in the amount of one hundred sixty-seven thousand, three hundred and one dollars and five cents on May nineteenth, nineteen, two thousand twenty-two, and main tears, number twenty-two dash eleven, in the amount of thirty-nine thousand, six hundred and three dollars and eight cents on May ninth, two thousand twenty-two.
Second.
Second, Michelle. Motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? For all. I have a motion for the favorable one, please.
Oh, sorry. A motion, it was moved to direct the superintendent of schools to authorize payment by the town treasurer to each party listed here. Herein, the sum set against each name contained in the payable school warrant, number twenty-two dash thirty-four, in the amount of thirty-three thousand, four hundred and thirteen dollars and fifty-one cents, number twenty-two dash thirty-five, in the amount of thirty-seven thousand, four hundred and eighty, fifty-eight dollars and twelve cents on May nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? For all. We'll see if the board will approve participation in the solar power credit opportunity.
Move to approve entering into an agreement with revision energy to participate in solar power credits.
Do I hear a second? We have to have a motion in a second before we can discuss.
Oh, second.
So this is a follow-up, basically, that I know Josh brought to a meeting a few weeks back, and then the buildings and grads committee met this week, or should say this week, last week, with the two vendors that we were looking at with pursuing an energy credit contract. We've heard from both. This is basically, this is basically purchasing, allowing a third party to purchase our solar energy credits that are allowed to us under, under the law that was passed in two thousand nineteen to try to encourage solar generation in the state. So it would be, it would be like, it would be like you or I going to Hannaford, and somebody outside the door said, hey, for eighty dollars, we're going to give you a hundred-dollar gift card to go in and, and buy groceries. So you, we basically would pay eighty dollars to go buy a hundred dollars' worth of groceries. Essentially, the utility company, utility, public utility commission, it's all funded through them, but that extra twenty dollars is, is basically where the, the difference would be in that these solar companies, how they make their profit and convert those dollars into green energy, basically. So by us selling what's available to us for what we use as an electricity load, which is a substantial, substantial load at both schools, it allows us to save, you know, thousands of dollars on top of doing a green, a green thing, a good energy thing for the environment. And reviewing both proposals, revision, in my opinion, came out in the, in the, the top. I know last week when we looked, we had looked at some dollar figures, those after the meeting, I, I went back to both companies and we kind of fine-tuned what we use for load to really get a real accurate depiction, because they were both, one was proposing sixty percent buy-in, one was proposing an eighty-five percent buy-in. So all things being considered, if we compared both on just a dollar value, revision came out to about a seventeen thousand, two hundred dollar a year savings for us, which over the course of a twenty-year contract is four hundred thousand dollars. Novell Energy would do an eighty percent with us, they were at fifteen thousand, nine hundred and forty-six dollars. So when we really whittled it down and looked at what we felt is all we could save, that was, you know, the numbers actually improved and, and in our favor, fortunately. Doesn't always happen that way, as you'll see when we're working on fuel oil and prices for coming here. But this is, it is, in my opinion, a critical thing to, to do at this time. The laws are changing, the laws have changed already in the last few months regarding solar. It's a time-sensitive matter because there is a project currently being built that we can get in on, and that is starting construction this month. So a shovel-ready project that we can get in on is, it's kind of having two birds in the hand rather than one in the bush, so to speak. And, you know, I, I see the seventeen thousand dollars in savings is, is, is going to help offset some of the oncoming costs that we're going to see in the very near future of electricity. So I would certainly entertain any questions. I've got a lot of time spent with both companies, and they were both very reputable. I've, I've looked at a lot of different companies, they're both, both good companies, and the people that we got with, with both of them were very good. So I take any questions?
But does the twenty-year contract, is that a little scary compared to the ten-year?
I would, you know, you can look at that two ways, and I, I would look at that. I looked at four years ago, when we signed an electric contract for a four-year contract. I was scared to death, send for your contract locking in a rate at six cents per kilowatt hour. That was, that was like, boy, four years is a long time. I would sign a twenty-year contract today at that rate if I could. You know, we're looking at the fourteen cent margins now, we're looking at fifty to sixty to eighty percent increases. So on the one hand, yeah, twenty years is a scary number. On the other hand, I don't see energy costs decreasing anytime soon. And I, I look back historically, yeah, they're kind of up and down, but nothing has ever really truly gone down when it comes in.
Never comes back.
No. I only see us using more energy, not less. The more energy we use, the better these numbers actually work in our favor. So, eh, eh, you know, it's a, it's a contract. But I also do know twenty years comes and goes pretty quickly, too. So, you know, to save four hundred thousand dollars in twenty years is a substantial chunk of money. To, it laws are changing, and what we're seeing in the law changes already, if you're not in on this before the law changes, you're looking at less savings potentially going into the future. So a twenty-year contract signed next year may not be as lucrative as the one signed this year because more people are jumping on board, and so I, part of getting in early is greater savings, so.
Yeah, right now, they're starting for customers.
Yeah.
And Novell, do they have a, a project that you can buy into, or is that one still in?
That one is still in the, with revision, they are, project, like I said, is beginning this month. We would be seeing potentially savings in the first quarter of next year, which is a timely thing for us. Novell, the best they could tell me is potentially a year from now.
Yeah.
But they really couldn't tell me they have a shovel-ready project to build. They've got a lot of interest, but, like I say, there's the bird in the hand. You know, and, you know, that, that's a huge one, because some of these companies with the law change, maybe, they may have had a project lined up, but now it doesn't fit into the new law, so they may have to back out of. So you're, you're looking at that, too, going forward.
Now, there's always like a lot of scuttle about consolidation and all that. How would that affect if we did the twenty-year contract, say, that actually did happen? Would it be, would there be room in it for?
If we consolidated typically, my feeling would be, I can't speak for what consolidation would look like.
Exactly.
I don't see this building going away.
Yeah.
I, and if we consolidated, I see those costs increasing, not decreasing. So there, again, your savings would be greater moving forward with consolidation.
Makes sense.
Any other discussion? We have a vote? All in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Did the board approve adding the new federal holiday, June nineteenth?
Motion to recognize Juneteenth as a paid federal holiday for the Millinocket School Board.
Oh, second.
Second, Erica, Michelle?
Yes.
Any discussion? All in favor? I have a motion on the calendar, please.
Motion to approve the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three school calendar.
Second. Is the only change, the now additional holiday of Juneteenth?
It's on, it's on, on the calendar already.
The changes are virtual snow days. I think it's three. I think it says on here.
Two days will be traditional and three-plus will be virtual snow days.
Yes. That's the changes. Delightful. Along with actual staff getting training divisions until they get a lot here.
It's the prom one in there from the, the early release days, we had to add that in, it's still, it's there.
Any other discussion on the calendar?
Do we know why the, the two traditional snow days and three-plus becomes, what's a virtual snow day? Does that mean virtually school?
Yes.
So do we know why that changed?
Because if we do the two traditional snow days, there has been interest expressed that we do have some traditional, but then if we have, after that, we have the virtual, then those are days that we do not have to make up at the end.
Okay.
Because it can be counted as a school days.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All in favor? For all. This probably will not be a popular decision, but number ten, the discussion of the Granite Street School drop-off and pickup. Considering how two of our key players are not here to talk about it, Sam and Josh, I would like to table this discussion in all fairness to them, until a time which they can be here.
Do we need a motion for that?
It, no, because it was just a discussion, we're just going to have a discussion on it. But considering how the, the ones who are. But considering how good we, the ones who are, you know. Does anybody have a problem? Right, thank you. Upcoming meetings, May thirty-first and June fourteenth. Motion to adjourn? Yeah, we have, we, before we adjourn, w- we did have a gift for Jillian, and, you know, we all signed the cards. We was kind of hoping she would show up. She's been a big asset, Jillian Harper, to our board, to help us understand the student's point of view in her reports and stuff. And we, we got her a little something as a thank you. Jillian, if, if you are on, Ms. Peavy will have that in her office for you tomorrow, and the board would truly like to thank you for your service. Motion to adjourn?
I must do that.
Second.
A favor? For all. Thank you everyone for being here.